I'd like to call the September 11th meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To apply, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask everyone to make sure that all cell phones and electronic devices are set to silent and to let everyone know that this meeting will be taped for airing on DCTV. Ms. Boucher, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mrs. Ammaral?
Here.
Mr. Noon?
Yes, I am here today.
Here. And we'd like to welcome Mr. Noon back. We're happy to have him back here with us.
Very much so. Good to be back.
We'll leave it at that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, the first item on our agenda is public comment. If anybody would like to come up to the microphone up here and comment on any of the items on our agenda for the evening, you're welcome to do so at this time.
Don't all speak at once?
All right. No takers. We will move on to the next item on our agenda, and that's the approval of the minutes. Why don't we start with the regular session minutes? Unless anyone has any objections, we'll do both July 31st and August 28th, all in one motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. So, I have a motion by Mr. Noon, a second by Mr. Oliver, to approve the regular session minutes for 7:31 and 8:28. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I will abstain from the August 28th meeting.
Okay. So, we are unanimous on the 31st, and four in favor, one abstention on the 28th. Next, we have the executive session minutes. Why don't we take these separately, so that way Mr. Noon's can vote separately on them? Let's start with the July 31st executive session minutes.
So moved, Madam Chair, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete.
Second.
All right. So, I have a motion by Mr. Noon, a second by Mr. Oliver, on the July 31st executive session minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So, next I will entertain a motion on the executive session minutes for August 28th.
August 22nd?
Did I miss the 28th?
22nd.
I didn't see the 28th. I didn't see the 22nd in my ... they didn't download, so maybe that's why I'm missing them.
Well, I got it here.
Okay. So, we'll do ... let's do the 28th, since that's what I said, and then we'll go back to the 22nd.
That's fine. That's fine. So moved, Madam Chair, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is completed.
My second. All right. So, we have a motion by Mr. Noon, a second by Dr. Karafotis on August 28th. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Okay. So, we have on the 28th, we have four in favor and one abstention. And then finally, the executive session minutes for August 22nd.
So moved, Madam Chair, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is completed.
Second? Have a second?
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion by Mr. Noon, a second by Mr. Oliver. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor?
I need to abstain.
Okay.
I will abstain as well.
You want to abstain?
That was the afternoon meeting, correct?
That was the morning meeting.
Yes. Who was there? I don't have them in front of me.
Uh, Dr. Karafotis, Mrs. Ammaral, Dr. Jenkins.
You both abstain, then we do not have a majority to do it again.
Yeah, you were there. You were there.
Oh, we were there, well.
You were there. I wasn't, but you were.
Okay.
I wasn't as well.
All right.
Were you not there, Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, this says he was there, but he wasn't.
Yeah, you were there.
You were there.
The afternoon?
I was the one that wasn't there.
Okay. So, we need to adjust. Obviously, we need to have further discussion about these.
Can we table this for now?
Let's table the August 22nd, and I believe ... I trust this Boucher more than I trust your two memories, but we will go back and verify that.
We'll put this on for the next meeting.
Put that on for the next meeting on that one, when we go back and look and refresh our memories.
That's fine.
All right. So, that would've been done. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Dr. Gifford, for the welcome and introduction of new teachers.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Jenkins. We are delighted tonight to welcome our new hires this year, our new teachers. And to kick us off, I'll invite Ms. Olivera to the ... I know, she's like, "Crank", to the podium, to describe our Project TIME program, and then introduce our folks. And you will know that you received all of the biographies of these folks in your packets. And over time, and I know Tracy would probably say this, we're posting them on our Facebook page for all the world to see, so.
And we are, yes.
All right.
Thank you so much. So, I'm here just to quickly talk about our Project TIME. TIME stands for Teacher, Induction, and Mentoring Experience. And the reason we do Project TIME is it's a regulation from DESI, but it's also, we do believe strongly in what happens between the four walls of a classroom has the greatest impact on student achievement and student results. So, we strongly believe in supporting our teachers and making sure they have all the resources they need to be successful, they have all the answers to their questions, and everything they need to get the job done. We believe, when teachers are successful and happy at their work, that our students do definitely have a better chance at achieving high levels. As I said, TIME is induction and mentoring, and there is a difference between them. Induction is what we do as a group. DESI says everyone has to go through an induction period, whether you are new to teaching or new to a district. We go through an induction program, and we assign you a mentor, so everyone out here has a mentor. And then mentoring is a one-on-one experience. We provide everyone mentoring their first year they're here with induction, and then depending on the license they have, they go through a year, two or three, to get 50 hours of mentoring, and that is also needed for them to move on up in license from DESI. So, we provide all those services for our new folks. I have to give a shout-out to our mentors. We try to pair folks up with somebody who is in their school, has the same job-alike, kind of do the work that they're going to be doing to try to guide them, and the success of our program is really built on the shoulders of the mentors, who really take folks under their wings. And every summer in August, I reach out, and I'm like, "Hey, you want a mentor for me?" And they openly say yes, and jump on board, and call the person up, and get them in the schools, and give them tours. So, I always have to shout-out to the mentors. Our program starts out in the beginning of the year before school even starts, and we have a full program that goes all year. This year, we did two days in the beginning as an introductory, which I'll talk to a little bit later on in a couple of minutes. And then we go on to have about a meeting a month, in which we go into all the topics, going from technology to curriculum, classroom management, a PBIS program, RTI, anything that folks need. It's kind of difficult, because everyone needs everything the first few months of school, but we're always busy doing things, so we spread them out across the year. I go on what ... the feedback I get from everyone as to how we should organize them, so every year it looks a little bit differently, but we cover the same topics. Like I said about feedback, I always get the feedback from folks to kind of guide where we're going. So, some changes that we made, or some enhancements that we made to our program is this year, we took our introductory meeting, which happens about the first two weeks before we go back to school, and we expanded it for two days this year. All of our new folks were trained in our suicide prevention. That was a mandated training from DESI, so they received that during that time. We had Dartmouth Police Department came in, and we had Alice training for everyone. We gave everyone laptops this year, right when they came in. That was some feedback that we got, that they weren't getting the technology they need, so they have to take attendance, but they didn't have the computers to do them, or the access into certain platforms that they needed. So, we spent a lot of time giving them the resources that they need. All the logins, and a funny story I heard was one of my new hires came up to me and said ... because I told him, "A lot of people forget, we have Rubicon Atlas, it's a new platform, and not everyone's used to signing in on, so you might have to help someone." So, she came up to me the first day in school, and she said, "My colleagues didn't know how to do it." And I said, "I can do it for you, don't worry." And she was all thrilled that she knew how to do it and log everyone in, so we got them all up to speed on that. We go over The Skillful Teacher, which is a book from John Saffia, research for better teaching, and we'll go through that across the year, doing different chapters and units. We have a lot of guest speakers that come in to go over things, so they aren't always hearing my voice, go on and on. And I can't see what the last one is. Oh, we took IDs, which is great, so people can scan in. I had everyone take a selfie of themselves and send it to Ricky Mello, who does our IDs. So, we got everyone up and running, so if day one, they could come in and know a lot before they even met their students. And now, it's time to meet all of our new members. This year, we have 30 new folks, and I'm just going to introduce them and their mentor, and they're just going to give a little stand. As Dr. Gifford had said, all of their staff spotlights, which we just asked them some silly questions, they kind of answered them. The school committee received a packet, we'll send that packet out to school of all the staff spotlights, and we are showcasing them on Facebook and our social media accounts. One thing that was interesting, as I went through and read them all, is there's a question about why did you choose to work at Dartmouth Public Schools? And a lot of the pattern and trends was about our reputation, and how folks know that we're a warm, welcoming community, we do what's best for kids, and it was just interesting to go through and read all those, and here all ... kind of all had the same flavor to them, as to why folks chose to work here. So, we'll start out at the DeMello School, who had quite a few new folks join us, a group of grade-one teachers. So, we have Kelsey Breaker, who's being mentored by Katie Ammaral. Where is she? Kelsey, you get to start out. And Jennifer Alvanis is also being mentored by Katie Ammaral, teaching grade-one at DeMello School. And joining that team is Courtney Harrington, who's being mentored by Amy Slaven. Then we have Kelly Di Ambrosio, who's being mentored by Lisa Reitzes. There she is. And Tara Cotojo, who's our new art teacher, who's also being mentored by Lisa Reitzes. Gabrielle Desmaris is our new grade-two teacher at DeMello School, and her mentor is Melissa Pickering. At Potter School, we have one new staff member, Tricia Weaver, is our new preschool teacher, and her mentor is Andrea Ebro. At Quinn School, we have Jonah Ingram, who is our new special education teacher, being mentored by Amy Pollak. Jennifer Kloon is our new literacy coach, and her mentor is Carolyn Source. Melanie Franzizi is our nurse, and she's being mentored by Kelly Stoll, who couldn't be here today. And Ashley Di Costa is a special education teacher, and her mentor is Lindsay Valfides. And Kelly Rose Wells is our grade-four teacher, and her mentor is Jessica Collier. Over at Dartmouth Middle School, we have Rachel Lassie, who couldn't be here, because she is also our volleyball coach. So, we said, "Just win the game, and I'll be okay, you don't have to come." Her mentor is Alice Hukedo-Galligan, who also is not here, because it's her birthday. Robin Bro is a nurse, and Allison Cato-Gallan is also her mentor. Elizabeth Dufall is a special education teacher, and Carolyn Wingate is mentoring her. Michael Koenig is a special education teacher, with Lisa Katz-Turgen being his mentor. Adam Dishjodens is our new tech teacher, with Ann Brown, who is also coaching field hockey, has a mentor. Vicky Varasquez is a grade-seven math teacher, with Rochelle Mitchell as a mentor. And Rochelle is also mentoring Crystal Souza, who is our grade-eight science teacher at Dartmouth Middle School. Adam Braga is our new grade-eight history teacher, with Paul LaConte being his mentor. And Fritha Sylvia is teaching grade-six math, with Melanie Mattson being her mentor. Over at Dartmouth High School, we have Stephanie Nokon, being our social worker, and Kathy Thomas is her mentor. Wesley Lemar is a new ELA teacher, and Will Higgins is his mentor, who couldn't be here. Brian Hellcamp is a history teacher, with Liz True is his mentor. Lauren Enkerson is also a history teacher. I probably messed up with Caitlin Daly, being her mentor. Kelly Duah is an ELL teacher, and she is both at the middle school and the high school, but Kerry DeJesus is our other ELL teacher, who is her mentor. At Cushman School, we have two new employees. Courtney Rotsky is a preschool teacher, and Lisa Dwyer is her mentor. And Lisa is also mentoring Gina Goyet, who is our speech and language pathologist. And Ann Mueller is our outreach social worker at Cushman School, with Charlene Swearmire being her mentor. And Heather Noiz-Fredette is our preschool occupational therapist, with Kathleen Baldwin being her mentor. So, we'd like to welcome you all. We hope you have a great few weeks and a great career, I guarantee.
Could I ask a question to you all, sir?
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Welcome aboard.
It's always exciting to see new faces, so we're happy to have you here. Mr. Oliver?
Just very quickly, just welcome everyone to the Dartmouth Public Schools. I wish you nothing but a successful school year. I want to believe that we truly are a family here, and I just wish the best for all of you. So, thank you.
Dr. Karafotis?
Yes, welcome. I did get a chance to read over all your spotlight papers, and I'll pick up on what Tracy said, and the fact that so many of you mentioned the quality of the school system, and that you want it to be working in Dartmouth because of its quality. And I just want to say, that didn't come easy. People ... our staff has worked for years to build it every year. So, we're now handing it to you to kind of continue and make it even better, because the better we are as a staff, the better education our students will receive. So, welcome and congratulations on entering this, what I think is a wonderful school system.
Yeah, welcome to Dartmouth Public Schools. It's just a fantastic community, and really happy to have you all here. Best of luck.
I will kind of echo my colleagues' comments. As I always say, in the profession that I've been in, even though I'm retired now, I get around a lot of different districts, and I've been in a lot of different districts. And as I always say to people, we may not be the best, but we do a damn good job of what we do, and we get a pretty good bang for our buck. To the new teachers, in all seriousness, take a look around the room. There's a lot of experience here, not only with your mentors, but also when you're building it in the district. And somewhere down the line, something's going to pop up, you're going to have a question. And maybe your mentor, just because of the type of question, doesn't know the answer. Don't be afraid to seek someone else out, whether it's a building administrator or another colleague, and just say, "What do you do?", or "What's this all about?" That's the key. The communication between you and your mentor, and you and your colleagues, is unbelievable, and it will get you a long way. And I wish you all the best.
Thank you. I would echo what everyone else would say, too. It's always exciting to see the new faces in the district. It's a great school district. We're not from here. We moved here because of the Dartmouth Schools, and I have two kids in the schools, and I have been so pleased with the education they've received, and that's because of all of you. So, we're happy to have you here. Thank you very much. And then we'll also take maybe like a quick two-minute break, because we know that you all have had long days, and you don't have to stay for our entire meeting. You are welcome to ...
But you're more than welcome to stay.
You're more than welcome to stay! You are also more than welcome to depart at this moment, if you would like to, too. But thank you very much, and welcome to the district.
Thank you, everyone.
I guess we're going to look at this.
Yeah, I know. No.
It's a brand-new school. I didn't think about it.
Which ones are we talking about?
That's all right. We need to make a slight edit anyway, so it's fine.
I was ...
You had me convinced I was, and I said I didn't, no.
That's right.
I'm sorry, Carol.
We haven't said I didn't go.
You know what? I looked at these and ...
Oh, what a great ...
... today, and a whole bunch of other stuff.
I could've sworn there was another one.
Oh, my goodness. My son was visiting with his family, so.
He goes to the crowd.
Yeah. I guess we have that interest. They're too funny. See, they grabbed everything but a pen out of mine. I can't sign. Glad you made it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I have like a few pens in my bag.
So, we'll just come back to it next. Mom, I don't want to do that, and I'm going to say, "It's fine."
Nope, nope. Fix them all.
I'm struggling. My heart.
One felse with it.
They steal my heart.
Okay. So, next on our agenda is the Student Representative Report, but I believe they probably have not yet had the chance to select the student representative. So, we will hopefully have that for our next meeting. So, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda next. Does anybody have any problem with ... do you want to take these one at a time? Do you want to do them all at the same time? Does anybody have any questions?
I'm fine with taking them all.
Okay. So, I'd like to ... then I entertain a motion to approve the fundraising activities proposal from the Dartmouth School Music Association, the Quinn School PTO, and the Potter School PTO.
So moved.
All right. So, I have a motion by Mr. Noon, I have a second by Dr. Karafotis. Any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to reach out to all these three groups, and I want to thank all your parent volunteers for all the hard work and time and effort that they put into these groups, because I know a lot of these activities wouldn't be possible without the support of these organizations that in turn support our schools. So, I want to thank everyone for their time and volunteering.
Yeah. I'd also like to draw attention to this. I mean, we talk rightfully about Dartmouth pride, but a lot of what we do is dependent on non-taxpayer dollars and the efforts of volunteers and donors in our community. And a particular DSMA raises a lot of money for our band. People are rightfully proud of our band, but that level of excellence wouldn't be possible without the help and support of really committed parents, teachers, and other people in the community. I don't know what to call you, Mr. Noon, right? But ...
I'm just a parent and volunteer.
And it's a lot of money we're talking here. I think, if I'm reading this right, over $60,000 was raised, more than that. A lot of money raised, right? And I don't think people see that, and so I think it's important for us to talk about these things, in addition to the money raised by the PTOs and other organizations. And so, I really think it's important to highlight that, and I think ... and to thank people for all the efforts that they put in on behalf of our students. Any other comments or questions?
I would just, you know, echo what everyone else has said, but as a ... I know as an elementary school principal, we wouldn't have had the field trips, we wouldn't have had the special programs that come into the school, we wouldn't have had the great field days, and all the different things that kids look forward to in the school setting if it weren't for our parent groups and their support. So, again, thanks to all of you out there for your support. We really appreciate it.
Any further discussion or comment? All right. So, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. So, motion carries unanimously. Next, we're moving right through our agenda. We're going to hand it over to Mr. Kylie for a capital improvement plan update.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. So, we had met with the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and to discuss our remaining requests from the FY18 capital plan that hadn't been funded at the June Town Meeting. They, I'm pleased to say, they were very supportive, and had recommended all of the items be funded at the October Town Meeting, with the exception of the Dartmouth Memorial Stadium improvements. But I am optimistic in that during that meeting, we had a chance to make our case for the stadium, and they have agreed to allocate $50,000 for some preliminary design work, and to bring in the expert help we need to sort of fine-tune the definition of exactly what we would need, what it would cost, and what it would look like, so that we can show people what it could be. So, I'm very pleased with that. So, that's the recommendation, and everything will be moving forward to Town Meeting.
Questions or comments? Mr. Oliver?
I'm happy to see that they were amenable to the $50,000 for the stadium, because I know at our meetings that we've had, in which is to bring everyone up today, we're going to ... we'll have another meeting of the TURF Committee to ... Wednesday. Wednesday. So, myself, Mr. Kylie, as well as Mr. Tattelbaum from the Finance Committee, and Mr. Mickelson from the Select Board, along with David Kressman, and I forget the other ladies.
Deborah Wender.
Deborah, from Town Hall. We'll be meeting again. We're going to be looking at some of the successful projects in the state of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we're going to be taking it from there, and I hope to bring back some ... an update, a good full update to the school committee, once we meet later on this week. But I am pleased that $50,000 was really necessary, so we could get kind of get some blueprints, get some architects in there to take a look at it, and see really what needs to be done, because we're looking at the full scope, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kylie, the full scope of the stadium, not just the field, not just the lights, but the whole package. So, and I'm happy to see that everything else was moved along as well.
I will echo that I'm happy with that, but also somewhat frustrated, right? Because this means we go to Oktober Town Meeting, and we get the money for the plan, so best-case scenario, we get money for a stadium in June Town Meeting, which means it's too late to put in a stadium for the Fall 18 season. So, at the very earliest, if all of the stars align, unless we do a special Town Meeting, we're looking at the best-case scenario, fall 2019.
Agreed, yeah. Well, and that's kind of, I think, our best-case scenario would have been two years out, and that's a best-case scenario.
Right. Right. That's a best-case scenario, right? Dr. Karafotis?
Yes. I would just like to thank Mr. Kylie for his work in the kinds of things that we take to the Capital Improvement Committee, because they make our schools ... keep them up to date, which is something that we most appreciate. And a thanks to the Capital Improvement Committee, because they've been very generous to us, and it helped us a great deal. So, just thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Beautiful. We'll take it. Thank you.
So, we don't need any sort of motion or anything, right? So, next we'll hear from you, Mr. Kylie, about the financial report?
Sure. So, I provided you with a financial report that shows that we had spent all of our money. So, we spent $40,860,671. We had moved a little bit of money, one about a little over 1% of the budget around throughout the school year, and I wanted to show you that. And that's if you look at the original FY17 budget column and the adjusted budget, you can see that there is some movement. And primarily, we focused on technology and instructional materials for those funds, as well as we had to accommodate some special ed tuition costs. So, those were the primary recipients. The primary areas that we saved, well, really, the big one was utilities. So, I'm hopeful that with the advent of our high school boiler project, which is up and ready and running, that we'll see even more savings in FY18 from that, because we didn't have that in place when I did the budget for FY18, so I didn't really factor those savings in. So, that should be something to look forward to, hopefully.
Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Noon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Kylie, it looks like, just for whatever reason, we went like almost $400,000 over in ... just shot a $400,000 in tuitions?
We did have ... we did have a significant amount of investment, and if you look at the FY18 budget, it reflects that. So, the ... we've had move-ins in a variety of different reasons, including some decrease in our circuit breaker funds from the state. Just so happens that those circuit breaker funds are determined by the costs of specific students, and some students, you'll get a significant amount more than others. Low-cost students, you actually get very little, where we bear the burden of most of the cost, and whereas some larger outplacements, you get quite a bit of reimbursement. So, when those things change, they have a pretty dramatic impact. But we have had some additional students move into the district, and like I said, And, like I said, in FY18, you'll see that that number is pretty close to that FY17 number, actually, in the budget.
One last question.
Go ahead.
One last question, Mr. Kylie. And it just came to mind when we were talking about this, the McKinney-Vento money. How did we make out on that?
We did find, we used, um, sev- just under seventy thousand dollars of McKinney-Vento to supplement this. Um, so, and we do still, we left some money in the account. And we'll be getting, you know, an additional amount this year. But, um, but we did use a significant amount to offset the cost-
Okay.
-for FY17.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, so I think, uh, we'll turn it over to, uh, Dr. Gifford for the superintendent's update.
Okay, just a couple of things. Um, seems like we just met, which was like about last week. So, um, just wanted to mention, if you go by Bush Street, the, they're really moving along on the roof, the roof is done, and then the shingling of the side. So it's really looking very nice. We're still putting up with this today. They were all crawling through my window looking in, you know, with the stations and things. So it's kind of awkward, but we're managing. It's looking wonderful. We've been able to visit all of our schools. As I think I said last time, that we've really been off to a really good start. But last week, we, Michelle and I, Ms. Roy and I, visited everything. And, um, particular note, uh, at the high school, it was really fun to go down at like, uh, the new biotech lab and, um, some of the other engineering rooms that the teachers have now created. And just a few folks that I hadn't even really talked to before and about what's happening with the engineering and whatnot in the classrooms. Great, uh, still life in the art room and just some really wonderful things. We were very, very impressed at, at what's going on in all of our schools. Sports, I, as you know, has started. I was able to get to a volleyball game last week, and I think the girls are looking better than ever. I said, "I don't know if it's because they've, you know, they're a year older," or what, it was the team we were playing, but they looked outstanding. So that was awesome. That's the only one I've gotten to so far. A middle school open house was terrific. Again, they had a very large crowd show up. And, um, I managed to meander around through some of the rooms full house, especially, of course, the sixth grade group of teacher, you know, uh, teach, parents that were there. So, kudos to the middle school staff again for their outstanding work. I know we have more coming up. And, um, I just want to mention the school store, too, because the, um, Lisa, who runs that, she put a shout-out on the Dartmouth Helping Dartmouth page. And I saw all the pictures and went, "I've got to get in there." So, we, we, we ravaged that last week, too, and got our little Dartmouth gear. So, um, if you're interested in getting something there, certainly stop by the school store during lunchtime. They have some really nice stuff. So pretty much that's it going on right now, just the normal meetings and whatnot. But off to a really, really good start.
Excellent.
Excellent. All right, so next we're onto the Report of Chair and sort of under this and other matters. Since we're in open session now, I'd like to maybe try to, we had talked about it the last meeting, um, looking at our calendars and putting together a working session um, to talk about the school, um, the school building plan. And now that Mr. Nunes is here with us, I thought maybe we could look and see, um, what we have available. I think our next meeting, which is the last thing on the agenda, I'm skipping ahead, is the-
Twenty-eighth.
The twenty-
Sorry, my fault. Twenty-fifth.
So, could we do, what is everybody's ne- I know it's three, it ends up being three Mondays in a row, but could you guys do like a working session on September eighteenth?
I can't get enough of this group.
I know.
What time are you thinking of?
I, well, we'd have to, could we do like a later thing with them? Right after work?
Yep.
Or does that not work for you?
That's my last leadership. I think it goes until like four-thirty.
So we could do it, yeah, we could do it like, like an evening meeting.
I'm, anytime it works, whatever.
We all have to work, so, or some of us have to work.
Right.
So, right.
Some of us.
But so could we do like-
Karafotis, you didn't say anything, did you?
Do we want to-
Few dates, because we don't feel-
Okay, so let's start the eighteenth, see, eighteenth, uh, at like six is one possibility. Then we'd look at maybe what other, what other nights is everyone free and-
All right, so are we going on the eighteenth for that?
We're going to put that as our first priority. But, um, if they're not available, then we're not going to be able to do that. The Monday after that, we have a school committee meeting. We could see, do Monday nights work best for everyone?
Yeah.
So we could see the second, October second, if that, if that other one doesn't work.
Okay.
So we, can we look at those two evenings and see if they're available? Um, and we can, maybe we could put on the agenda if it sounds good for you guys. Um, the last couple of years, we've also sort of worked out what we want to talk about in our meetings.
Yeah.
So we could do the, the building plan and also agenda building in that-
That's a good idea.
And that working meeting.
What time on this October second?
Well, we're going to, Mr. Kylie's going to see when they are available. We would prefer like, say, six o'clock.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, but that would be, that would be best. Okay, great. So now with that, sort of, at least those two potential dates there, um, does anybody have anything else that they would like to add?
I just have one thing.
Okay.
Uh, just really quickly, I just want to give a, uh, a shout-out to the, um, custodial and maintenance staff for doing a, as usual, a phenomenal job over the summer of getting, getting the buildings ready, keeping up with them, um, spending some of our capital improvement money. Also, uh, please give our regard, give my regards to the, uh, the maintenance, Rick Forever and his crew, as well as the custodial staff for, um, you know, just, I think we, I think we have one of the best in the area. I, I truly do. The amount of work we're able to accomplish in-house, so.
And our tech guys, too.
And how, how can I, how can I forget about those tech guys?
And the new district website, right? Dartmouth dot school.
Yep.
Which are sort of both live, but Dartmouth dot school. I've been sort of sharing it around and looking around. It looks great. So thank you for that, Mr. Galishaw and your team.
And the old one will disappear at the end of December, right? So it's transitioning, but check it out.
It looks great.
I caught some of it last night. I happened to, I was checking my email and I saw-
Dartmouth.
How did I end up here? You know, that type of-
They debuted it at the, uh, middle, the middle school open house.
Oh, okay.
They had a, uh, a nice presentation there.
Yeah, so lots of changes and, and, and good changes. And yes, I agree, thanks to everyone behind the scenes who made the first week of school a success.
Wow.
Um, I drove my son to school because I wanted to give him a little bit of extra treatment. Man, if those crossing guards aren't the hardest-working people in, in Dartmouth, I'm not sure who is, right? Uh, particularly down at the high school where it gets a little hairy around start time. All right, so with that, the only other item on our agenda is the next meeting date, which we said is, I've already forgotten, the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today. Um, we will post if we have a working session in between them. We'll let everyone know, otherwise that will be the tenth.
Yep.
With that done, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Nunes and a second by Dr. Karafotis. And do we have to, it's been so long that we haven't had executive session, I forgot. We can all just vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Uh, motion carries unanimously. Seven-ten. Thank you.